We'll call this meeting in public order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Also, please keep in mind those in Ukraine who are fighting for their freedom and democracy. Roca?
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Present. I'd just like the record to reflect too, Mr. King had a work conflict tonight. He had to give a presentation for work and isn't able to make it tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 21, 2022.
Second?
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution Number 21, 2022, and place it in Seventh Order for final vote. This resolution was tabled last week's meeting until our office could be provided with additional information regarding this grant, which is to be utilized for ground remediation on Penn Avenue. The information has been received on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved? Disperse with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A, memorandum from Mayor Page Cognetti dated March 1st, 2022 regarding mask recommendations for city buildings. 3B, minutes at the Civil Service Commission meeting held February 8th, 2022. 3C, correspondence received March 2nd, 2022 from the Office of Economic and Community Development regarding February Open Gov Report for all permits and licenses. 3D, minutes at the Scranton Redevelopment Authority regular meeting held February 2nd, 2022. 3E, minutes at the Scranton Redevelopment Authority special meeting held February 2nd, 2022. 3F, correspondence received from code enforcement dated March 3rd, 2022. 3G, resume from Acting Treasurer, Mitesh Patel. 3H, correspondence received March 4th, 2022 from OECD Executive Director Eileen Cipriani regarding cumulative licenses, permits report. 3I, City Council Request Log for February and March, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So St. Francis of Assisi Kitchen would like me to read a public service announcement, and this is through April 27th. Hunger affects many people in our community. The problem is great, but you can make a difference. Every day since 1978, St. Francis of Assisi Kitchen in Scranton has served a free meal to those in need. Your gift of 100 or more to the Host for a Day campaign helps to provide a complete nutritious meal to 200 men, women, and children. The Kitchen also provides meals in Carbondale and Elephant and operates a free food pantry and clothing store. To become a host for a day, call the Kitchen at (570) 342-556, or visit www.stfranciskitchen.org. Thank you for your generous report. Support, I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
Yes. I just wanted to recognize that today is International Women's Day, which is a global day that commemorates the social, political, and economic achievements of women. Women in different parts of the world use this day to come together to celebrate one another and rally for equal treatment and representation. It's also my daughter's first birthday, so happy birthday to Dylan. And that's everything I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements at this time?
Okay, I have one. So Saturday is Parade Day in Scranton. The Police Department asked me to announce the following. So the parade begins at 11:45 on Wyoming Avenue in front of the Cathedral. The Scranton Police Department will be closing several streets in downtown Scranton at 9:30 a.m. for the parade. There will be no on-street parking in the area between Penn Avenue and Jefferson Avenue and Lackawanna Avenue and Vine Street. The Scranton Police Department and its law enforcement partners will be conducting a full spectrum of operations to ensure the safety of all persons at the event. The officers will have a zero tolerance policy for any public intoxication, open containers, mischief, disorderly conduct, or any other criminal conduct. We are asking that if any persons do see any suspicious activity to contact 911 so our officers can investigate. Drones will not be permitted to be flown over the parade or in the staging areas. SPD also asks that if you're going to be drinking alcohol, please drink responsibly and have a designated driver or use public transportation, taxi, Uber, or Lyft to travel home safely. And also to gain access to the marketplace at Steamtown, you will have to enter through the West Philly side of the marketplace near the bus terminal. This weekend is probably one of the biggest events of the year for downtown Scranton, so I'm hoping that we could kick off a new sense of normalcy this weekend, and... That's all I have.
Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
First on the list is Joan Hoda-Wanets.
Joan Hoda-Wanets, Scranton. First, I want to thank Mr. Waldenberg for kindly emailing me the 2020 audit. Thank you. Better late than never. I don't know if you-
I'm sorry, but just on that note, that will be in Third Order next week, too.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if any of you had any time to go through it. A lot of people find audits dull and mind-boggling, but there are some interesting things in there. First, I want to remind council that according to the Home Rule Charter, Section 313, you are required to publish a fiscal summary of that audit in the local newspaper, so I'll be watching for that. I didn't see it the last year or two, maybe because you're all on Zoom. There is, obviously, it covers the year 2020, and so it's like 14, 15 months out of date already. But there are a lot of items of interest. One is, we have the eternal adverse finding, which we will always have because the Scranton Parking Authority does not provide financial statements, and I don't know how that could ever be resolved because they're just not going to do it. And that's an automatic adverse finding.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's an issue because they don't have financial statements.
I understand, because of the way we sold them off and everything else.
Well, it's not sold at its least.
Least, it's still-
But I get your point.
You can't tell them what to do.
Yes.
Bottom line. The Sewer Authority, of course, they noted that they have a different fiscal year than the city, where they end on March 31st, and of course, nobody can tell them to get off their duff and hire an auditor and get their audit done, so they don't. But you didn't get an adverse opinion for that. There was some good news. If you look at page 48, the net pension liability as of the end of 2020 was $51.6 million, which is not all that bad. And there was a net pension gain in the fund of $7.2 million, and that reflects a good stock market return. I don't know what's going to happen in 2022 because right now the stock market is totally out of control. But there is another number that you should be tracking and always sensitive to, and that's called the Net Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability, otherwise known as healthcare for retirees and their spouses. And at the end of 2020, that figure was $236.5 million. And you know, healthcare is, like the stock market, out of control. You have to be, people worry about pensions, but that's the other number you should worry about. What is the status of the union contract? Still in negotiation?
They're still under-
Okay.
Yes.
My nephew pointed out something to me a few nights ago. Where he works, his union is negotiating their contract. And they normally look at the standard inflation rate of 3%. But as you all know, inflation is also out of control, 7.5% and climbing. And I just wonder if the firefighter, police, clerical unions, DPW, if, you know, if I were a union rep fighting for their contract, I'd say, "Don't give me 2.5% or 3%. I want enough of an increase to counter that spike in inflation," because that inflation's not going down next week. It's going to go up. So, you know, I could see the union contracts going into arbitration. I looked at the police and fire, and if you do, if you play around with the numbers, you're looking at something like a 2.5 or more increase. But I think they're going to demand arbitration, which is going to impact that budget. There's some other interesting things in there. If you look at subsequent events, I think it's page 56, of the $1 million budget in this year for court awards, you've already lost $775,000 in lawsuit settlements in 2021. So it's interesting reading. But last but not least, what I'd like to know is, two weeks from today, when Mr. Patel's 35-day contract as Acting Treasurer runs out, who will be the Treasurer of Scranton? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. I'm Council President. I'm glad that you brought up Ukraine in your remarks today, because in my opinion, the leader of the free world is there, and I wish him the best as he confronts the Russian military. And I hope that everybody is paying attention on TV to the innocent victims being killed by the Russians there. But I have a question for the Council President, and that question is, do you feel you have an obligation to inform the residents of the city of any kind of city business that was conducted in the city prior to you becoming Council President?
Such as?
Well, the cost of the street signs in the city of Scranton and where the funding came from. Do you feel obligated to inform the residents where that money came from?
As it relates to street signs?
No, as to where the funding for the new street signs that we had placed before you were Council President, where that funding came from?
That came from the street sign department that prints out the street signs.
So you think that the city of Scranton made its own street signs in the beginning, and they weren't purchased from anyone at all?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Do you think that you owe to the residents of the city of Scranton how much the PEI was paid for, paid over the course of the 30 years that the city was in distress?
I could find that information for you. We get that, there was grants paid for by the State Department of Community and Economic Development that covered Pell's costs while we were under Act 47.
Well, that'd be a nice thing to tell the residents, and I'd check on the street signs, too. The other thing I think that maybe the residents would like to understand is, was the city budget ever reduced? Were there any real cuts in the city budget during the 30 years that the city was in distress?
I don't know. That, you'll have to go back and look.
Well, I mean, as Council President, don't you think that maybe you should inform the residents during the course of 30 years in distress, how much the city government itself reduced cost over that timeframe?
I'll ask for that information, yes.
Okay. Because my personal opinion is, and like I've stated here before, there's time for a rewrite of the Home Rule Charter, and that's only the tip of the spear, okay? There's just so many unanswered questions, and I think that the city residents need a lot more control over their government. I just don't know where the city's going, going forward, and this isn't a shot at any particular council member, but if you've lived in this city your whole life and you look at this city and you see the blight, and you see the amount of taxes, and you have people screaming for reassessment, and the vast majority of seniors are selling their homes because they can't pay their taxes, and you have state senators and state representatives not finding an alternate way to create revenue and take, in my opinion, the hellacious burden of property taxes off the backs of ordinary working people, and there need to be some answers found. And you know, the other thing that needs to be found is, we need to start knowing where all of the community development money is going, and where it's been spent in the past, and how it was invested in the city to benefit residents. You know, I mean, we just have so many questions, and I think that if the Home Rule Charter was rewritten, we could restructure this government so that the residents themselves could determine where community development money was going. Because I think the people in the neighborhoods know where money needs to go, just for some reason it never gets there, so I'll wait to see your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next on the list is Ron Elman.
Hello, Council. Well, tonight, my words of hate are directed towards this crazed Russian. He has to be the Hitler of the 21st century. In just two weeks, he has destroyed a beautiful, advanced country, modern. When you see it on television, it looks like America. You know? Putin's armies destroyed and bombed illegally and killed citizens that just two weeks earlier had everything in the world. It's very, it's great sadness for me to see this man. I honestly believe that if we had a man in the White House, which we don't, this wouldn't have happened, that Biden wouldn't have been... If he just took some actions against everything immediately, but according to the news, he's worried about Iran right now more than what's going on. Iran would probably attack people just like this in the future. You know, it's, I watch on television people that got relatives over there right here in town. It's, it must be so sad, because I saw on television, a man was standing there, and a bomb came and exploded behind him and killed, I think, three people in the family. A lot of us have never seen death. Of course, I have in the hospital, but death is the price we pay for the privilege of living, but it's not supposed to come with bombs from this Russian butcher. This country is in dire need of some leadership. A couple of weeks ago, the paper had a little note where the mayor wants a half million dollars for interpreters. This is ridiculous. People aren't going to assimilate, ever be Americans, when you just, you just don't force them to want to be Americans, like I said weeks ago-
Mr. Elman, I just want to, that's for the Police Department, so if they encounter somebody that, you know, speaks a different language, they have the ability to communicate in a public safety situation.
Well, what I was saying-
That's what that's, but I just want to clarify that that's what that's mostly used for.
All four of my grandparents learned, they were citizens, and they had to learn English and everything. Now, no one wants to. I've been to Texas. People born in this country, you can't understand them. That's not right. Let me tell you something real quick. When I was in the Air Force, we had a flight of B-17s from World War II, and I've been in, I've flown probably half the cities in the country at night. There comes a point of no return where you have to go forward, even if you have engine failure, or someone got a death in the family, whatever. This country isn't going forward like it's supposed to under the democratic leadership. I often differ with some of the Republican statements. But now, just, the future, just two weeks ago, the future of this country stinks compared to two weeks ago when people thought of and had dreams of, because who knows what's going to happen with it? They say gas and prices are going to be high for quite a while. I just, I just don't see a good future right now with the way things are going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elman. Next on the list is Tom Coyne.
Tom Coyne, Menucha. Members of council, in taking a look at the Mayor's memorandum for wearing masks, I've always come to the council and talked about the legal wording, and the devils are in the detail with writing. In Section 2, there is a section for unvaccinated individuals that if they are quarantined for the period of quarantine, they will need to utilize paid time off unless otherwise by law. What strikes me about this is not putting a policy for it, but it looks, just by the writing, to be punitive to people specifically who are unvaccinated people. The paid time off is not for vaccinated who are sick or anything else. It specifically references only directly under the unvaccinated individuals. Now, I don't agree with being unvaccinated, and people argue about that, but I do have a question when there is a punitive punishment written specifically into a section of a policy that's not uniform across the board. It smells like targeting people who may not be appreciated and might cause conflict. The second other point is in Section 3, for your isolation, though it may come from the CDC or other guidelines, it informs the employee to stay at home and to wear a well-fitted mask if he must be around others in your home. As much as I understand the policy, and with my own mother, I am secure to wear masks whenever I'm around her if I might be near someone who is exposed, putting in a city plan, a requirement that when someone is home, they must mask up and follow procedures, is a completely different statement from what they must do in the office. When you step into the home lives of employees who are off the clock and tell them they must follow a policy of mask-wearing at home, that line starts to cross over the border of what is in reasonable power. Leaving from that, a couple, two years ago, and I responded to the Parking Authority's message last week about not wanting to put out a press parking space, about their concerns. I do understand concerns about people throwing pieces of paper that say "press" on the windshield. Philadelphia had that same experience because on Sunday, they do have parking hours in Center City, and for the churches in Center City, they actually, churches hand out pieces of paper that say they are going to church services, and they got printed on the internet and sold on eBay, so the population could park anywhere they wanted to in the area of that church, free of parking on those Sundays. It's a legitimate concern, but as I stated beforehand, with the city of Philadelphia as an example, they create a placard. It has city logos, it has date stamps on it, and it has a registered number for it. They control the parking by going into the city, and you apply for this permit from them, and they hand it out. It is not something that just gets thrown on the dashboard, and the city of Scranton has the latitude of making something just as similar for the city. I'm not asking for a lot, I'm asking for it to at least be brought up for a discussion on whether we'll go forward or not. I understand the difficulties, because in doing this, there is some impact of one space to the city of Scranton, but that impact is not much, and I ask for, just like with the sound ordinance, give it a year, give it two years, give it a trial period, see if there's actually a detriment to the city by the loss or use of one space. And as for the argument that there are loading zones and/or parking spaces in front of City Hall that are accessible for 30 minutes only, that's not a comparable situation. You cannot do research on anything in 30 minutes. That's meant to walk in, get something, and walk out. I hope you'll consider and move it forward, or at least give me a response on whether or not this issue is dead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. That exhaust design-in sheet for tonight, would anyone else like to address, Council?
Marie Schumacher. My first question is, the shooting at Weston Field this past weekend, was that in the building or outside?
I believe it was outside on the playground, on the basketball court side, but I believe that. I'm not positive about that.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move on to 8B, even though it's been moved again. Why this property? The county assessor's office records do not include a 524 Penn Avenue. So who owns the property? Well, it stated, well, and I did reach out to the city administration and ask for the property identification number for 8B, and they were unable to provide it as well. So, that's an issue with me. Now, while it's stated as a gateway property to Pine Brook, it is not in the boundary of the revitalization borders, and driving through to the opposite end of this project, there appears to be a lot of blight that should be addressed. Now, actually, the first several blocks into the revitalization area, just, it's all commercial. I think there's one house in about six or seven blocks, and I know when I was growing up and going to school, to me, Pine Brook started where, at Cap House Avenue, where Penn turned into, into, into Cap House. But now, the photo of the higher-numbered portion of the 500 block of Penn Avenue that's in the backup does not appear to be unkempt. The stated purpose of this project is allowing operations to return to normal. Normal for this lot was Al's Mobile Mart. Does this mean that it'll become a gasoline station again? The stated specific goals go to be a- The stated specific goals, goals to be accomplished with this grant are to make groundwater safe for community members and to minimize the negative impact that the containments have on the environment. So the next question is, how long has this property been contaminated and—by what government department? Anybody know?
If you're not, I could get that information for you.
Okay. Does the city have an inventory of non-functional gas stations? And does the city have a plan for cleaning them up as they do this mystery property? If so, I nominate the former gas station on Music Street that is a gateway to both—just not downtown, but to the heads of—and headquarters of both the county government and the city government. And it's terrible. So I do ask for—if you're going to continue doing these kinds of projects, that I nominate the property at Music and Meadow Avenue to be cleaned up. But the bottom line with respect to 8B, there's just too many questions to move forward with this, and I would hope there'll be answers to the questions tonight, for next week. And I also think that, on a different subject, the governor told us we could become a third-class city because of our falling population. Now, I know we don't have to, but I think in this city should put together a committee and see what the differences are between a 2A and a 3, and how they help each of them help the taxpayers. And allow the taxpayers, maybe even put it on a ballot. I don't know. Depends on what the outcome of the committee would be, but I think that needs to be done in fairness because our population does continue to go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, everybody hear me? I'll keep my mask on. Don't want to see my ugly mug, anyway. All right. I do read the paper every day. I'm very pleased with the article that—excuse me—our most of the disagreements between the mayor's office and council have been worked on, and hopefully, we can put them aside because we have an awful lot of other problems confronting us. And once again, I'd like to call attention to this. I'll have to drop it after this week. Fiscal Watch Dodd Budget Report Because Political Flashpoint in School Funding Fight. Now, apparently, years back, they always felt—certain parties felt that they shouldn't see improvements in test scores. And that's just grand. But furthermore, lack of funding for a school from state entities means that we'll have to fund it. It'll mean that property taxes will go up, whether you have kids in school or not. I don't argue about that. Everybody should pay property taxes. You get a $15,000 a year alone to send your kids to school. And anybody that just attended school, well, just think of the opportunity you were given. We didn't have those opportunities in the '60s. It was just into the space program, and more important that we were in church every morning or something. Anyway, I'd also like to address externalization of liability with business. And the reason I'm doing it is because on several occasions, I have seen wind of the goons at the Naples landfill dumping over, either to looking to dump it into the stream that is very near there, which flows into the Na'od Gorge, or run pipelines to the Na'od Gorge. We don't need their pollution. Years back, you threw everything in the trash in an automotive garage or whatever. Whatever wasn't—had no value anymore, like an old oil filter or anything, contaminated containers, you name it. I worked in a plant, and I had to bring in OSHA as a representative. I was the chief union rep. And they were dumping trichlorothene waste and old grease from a scrubbing machine. And the representative from OSHA was told about it, where they were dumping it out into the middle of a field. And he said, "That's okay. That's not illegal." That was 1976. So if things were improperly done for years, we don't need their OSHA in the Na'od Gorge. It's nice to just at least have one clean stream going through town before it gets all the mine water and from the borehole at Old Forge. And we've got to watch out with the stock market here because we took an awful hit back in 2007 with police and firemen. I hope that don't happen. I fully support Ukraine. And somebody's a little confused here. A couple of years ago, we were all busy giving Pupsky a pat in the back there. You know, he's such a great guy, and he's so talented. It was last—two weeks ago, two. And, well, as far as the anti-vax crowd, please go out and get vaccinated because it's just a matter of time till we get another variant, and we're all back in masks again, whether we like it or not. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Would anyone else like to address council this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
The only comment I'm going to make is there were a few small outstanding requests I had with Frank, so I'll just follow up with you. Nothing major.
Thank you.
That's all.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
No, I don't at this time. Thank you.
Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I have a few. So back in June of '21, DPW had a hydraulic fuel incident on Clearview Street. I was there. I took a look. It was terrible. This fluid was everywhere. It was coming out of the ground. It was deteriorating a roof. So after seeing it, like I said firsthand, I was told along with the residents that an adjuster would be out. I just heard recently that this has never happened, and the fluid, now that it's warming up a little bit, is still present on property sidewalks, now oozing from the ground and still deteriorating that roof. So we were told everything was rectified. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you please get me an update of all correspondence of this issue that we thought was rectified?
I'll follow up with all parties, Mr. McAndrew.
Also, another concerned resident brought to my attention that they're looking for dates on the debris removal associated with the garage on Wyoming Avenue. So if you could please look into that. And this is—another concerned resident brought this to me again, that for a third week in a row—and I brought this—we sent this over, or you did, Mr. Waldenberg, maybe a week or two, maybe two weeks ago. But it's third week in a row, garbage is being put out three days early at 1717 Wyoming Avenue. It's for sale, and supposedly, the owners don't even live there anymore. They live in Dunmore. So the neighbors aren't sure what's going on here and whose garbage it really is, but it's violating the ordinance and being put out three days in advance for three weeks in a row. So if you could please follow up with that one.
I will.
And then I want an update. I know we received some correspondence, because I brought this up over, well, the past two weeks, about exonerations and fees that shouldn't be charged and should have been worked out last year. So could you please provide me an update from the treasurer's office about exonerations, all right? The process that isn't being communicated well to the public, and what's going to happen with that? Because I'm still getting contacted about these fees, fees that are not owed and still being charged, complaints about exonerations from last year, let alone this year. Residents are being told that they will get back to them, but it doesn't seem to be happening. So if you could please inquire about that, the status of the exonerations, and where we're at with the acting treasurer, who's claimed to be taking care of them.
I will, sir.
And then also, another—I got another complaint over in West Side in front of Vitale's Market at 1711 Jackson Street, that somewhat of a sinkhole opened up towards the gutter. It's not huge where a car is going to fall, but it's a hole in the ground. And I was sent a picture that all that's been done is a wooden horse put over it and two cones. So could you see, find out if that's been taken care of or when it's going to be taken care of, please?
I will.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, just in terms of—and I'm sorry for, Phil, I mentioned this in caucus, but in terms of the garage issue on Wyoming Avenue, I was in touch with Mr. Young yesterday, and I also spoke to Eileen Cipriani with OECD. So what's happening there is they have to—they have to adjust the emergency declaration based off new information in terms of what is in the hole. And the reason they have to adjust the emergency declaration is because that then requires them to go and readjust the DEP permit. So I was told that, you know, that should be signed—that an updated emergency declaration should be signed by the mayor and then go down to Controller Murray. I was told today—I don't think it did go down today, but I will follow up and see where that is tomorrow. And then the process after that is they have to send it down to DEP to get the updated permit. But once that's done, they already have the funds available to do that clear out. They've already rented the back truck that's going to be used to help in that. That's one of the pieces of equipment that we don't have in DPW. But—so hopefully, that could start being cleaned out within the next couple of weeks, you know, weather permitting. Sorry for not mentioning that in caucus. In terms of—I will look into Ms. Schumacher's request regarding inventory of former gas stations, and I would like to see the gas station on Music Street be in that, but this is something where the property owner has to apply for the grant. You know, for the Al's Mart, that the property owner applied for the grant. There's no city money. They applied for the grant, but they have to use the city as the conduit and/or pass-through, and they are providing the matching funds for the grant. The city is not providing any matching funds or any funds at all for that particular grant. And those grants are open to all city businesses. They could apply for them, and then, you know, they have to provide some sort of match. Also, in terms of—I believe it was brought up last week about the Lips Department overtime, we did get a response from Ms. Cipriani on Friday that the city's housing inspectors respond to emergencies in the city such as structure fires, burst pipes affecting electrical systems, vehicle crashes into structures, hoarding situations, police requests for assistance at properties unfit for habitation after normal work hours and on weekends. The housing inspectors are collectively bargain staff and are paid overtime for work outside of normal work hours. The housing inspectors have responded to 19 requests for assistance from the 911 Center since January 1. So that's the response we got on that. And also, we did get a correspondence from Representative Welby regarding something that was brought up when they were in, in terms of tax-exempt properties. So he did write to us that this is a topic that has disturbed him for years, and that aggravation is growing as we are adding more and more properties to the exempt list. But there was two things he brought up. Is one, he signed on as a cosponsor to House Bill 1702 that if approved, would provide funding to communities that have an excess of tax-exempt property in their taxing footprint. That legislation is expected to be introduced shortly. That would provide a dedicated state funding source to municipalities that have 15% or more of its overall assessed property value as tax-exempt properties within their municipal borders. This legislation would establish the Tax-Exempt Property Municipal Assistance Fund using revenue generated from the 18% liquor tax levied on all wine and spirits in Pennsylvania to provide funding to municipalities with high levels of tax-exempt properties. Municipalities with high levels of tax-exempt properties are facing difficult fiscal decisions. A shrinking tax base makes it difficult for some to provide the basic services expected from local government. By providing annual funding to these municipalities, they could stabilize their fiscal situation and enable them to maintain essential basic services to ensure the health and safety of their citizens. And it goes on to say that this program would be particularly beneficial to Act 47 communities, county seats, cities, and any community with a major institution of higher learning, a large nonprofit healthcare facility, or considerable state forest or game land. He also wanted me to mention that he has begun working with Lackawanna County to review some of the properties in Lackawanna County that are categorized as exempt. It's his opinion that some of these properties do not meet all five criteria necessary to meet the purely public charity standard. Also, as we're all aware, some of the tax-exempt property owners lease some of their space out to commercial entities. I hope that we can—he hopes that we can finally get an agreement from some of them to agree to pay property tax for a portion of their property that is being leased, rented out. And he also provided some more information just on PA's tax exemption and also pilot issues. Those are two issues I definitely agree with because we've all seen that, especially where you have for-profit companies that operate under the umbrella of a nonprofit institution and therefore don't pay any taxes at all. But they are for-profit companies. And that's all I have for tonight. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B, for introduction, a resolution authorizing the City of Scranton to accept $50,000 from Lackawanna College to hire a finance director in the City of Scranton in the 2022 budget year.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second, on the question.
On the question, so I disagreed with this position during the budget process, and my position hasn't—has not changed. Grants—they require a lot of work, and they're hard to come by, but they seem to fall out of the sky for unbudgeted positions that aren't sustainable or going to be sustained. The past two proposed budgets remind me of the old Oprah Winfrey Show, where she used to say, "Now, you get a car, you get a car, you get a car." Now, City Hall's saying with the past two budgets, "Now, you get an assistant, you get an assistant, you get an assistant." We have exited Act 47. Our business office needs to stand on its own feet, like I said last week. And our business office needs—or our administration, I'm sorry, needs to hire individuals with appropriate skill sets and expertise for these positions and not try to shore up assistance for everyone using private funding. The money these grants are coming to the city would be better spent in the neighborhoods. So I'll be voting no, and that's my reason why.
Anyone else on the question?
Also on the question, so I've been presented with some of the needs that the administration is saying that this position is required for. This discussion was had at budget time. Also, at that time, I was against adding legacy costs to our budget. That is a main concern of mine. I think before we get into a position like this, we need to look at maybe a consolidation of job duties, providing job descriptions. And I also don't like the fact that we're working around the official budget process. working around the official budget process. So I wouldn't be opposed to having this discussion going into next year's budget process. I came from the school district where we had to scale back some of the positions that we had at that point in time. I'd like to take a look at this office and how it operates currently this year before we add to our budget. So with that, I will be also voting no to 5B as well as 5C.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, I'll be voting in favor of this being introduced tonight. At the time of the budget last year, I was, I was in favor of including this position in the budget. I still voted for the budget despite it not being included, but seeing as we've received a grant, I would like to see how it goes over the course of the next year with this position. I feel that it would be, would be helpful for that department not having Pell there. I don't think it's fair to say that Pell didn't provide us any assistance over the years and the course of the 30 years that we were under Act 47. And I think that there are certainly plenty of duties that are laid out under this position that might not be being fulfilled now, and something that we would need, that would justify this position for. So for those reasons, I'll be voting in favor.
I will also be, on the question, I will also be voting in favor. I was in favor of the position with the budget, but at the same time, you know, that was a compromised budget. I think we have to do more, we do have to do a better job of long-term financial planning in terms of cash flow and such, and especially as we leave Act 47. And the fact that this money is coming in the form of two separate grants, I think that's also beneficial. And I think it also provides a system where you get a, you know, you get a work product out of that, and we get to assess that then, you know, going into next budget year. If we're not satisfied with the financial, you know, the finance directors that's paid for it through these donations, if we're not satisfied for that, we won't have to approve that in the budget. But at the same time, we've seen time and time again for years that we overspend on police and fire, and we underspend on everything else, and I think that is a detriment to our neighbor. And that's not to say that police and fire don't deserve to be paid what they're paid, but when you're not funding the finance department and the business department the right way, when you're not funding Lips the right way, when you're not funding DPW as much as you should, those have bigger long-term implications. So I will be voting yes on this.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It's a tie vote, so I don't know how we would deal with that, but I'm guessing this will be in fifth order again next week.
5C for introduction, a resolution amending resolution number 44, 2020 entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the award of the grant funds from the Willery Foundation in the amount of $50,000 to undertake a study to evaluate tax policy, billing, and collections with the goal of increasing collection rates, strengthening internal controls, eliminating, eliminating waste, and providing tax relief for Scranton residents. To repurpose the $50,000 in-grant monies to obtain and utilize a finance director in the city of Scranton for the 2022 budget year.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second, on the question?
On the question, I'll be voting no for the same reasons I mentioned for the above motion.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Again, it's another tie, so this will be in fifth order again next week.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $105,000 for the project to be known as West Scranton 12-Lot Clean and Green Revitalization Project located in West Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $105,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number 10, 2022, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone from 15 feet south of the garage located in the 300 block of North Webster Avenue, north to the intersection with Mulberry Street with a no parking sign to be posted 15 feet south of the garage entrance, and a no parking here to corner sign to be placed at the north entrance of the garage.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 23, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act up to the amount of $410,000 for the project to be known as Gray Street Park located at 42 Gray Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant up to the amount of $410,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for the consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 24, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act up to the amount of $1 million for the project known as Adams Avenue Streetscape Corridor Gateway Project in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant up to the amount of $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 25, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share grant account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act up to the amount of $1 million for the project known as Naog Pool Complex located at 500 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant up to $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such sub-project.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 26, 2022, accepting a donation presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Anthony and Anna Mae Andruskevich in the amount of $100.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson of the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, just as I said last week, I'd like to thank Anthony and Anna Mae Andruskevich for their donation.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 27, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Burckheimer Tax Innovations to provide collection services for the payroll preparation tax.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second?
On the question? On the question, I believe that these bills will start going out then in the next couple of weeks. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 21, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $100,000 to be utilized for ground remediation at 524 Penn Avenue, formerly Al's Mobile Mart, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? On the question, just as I mentioned in fifth order, this, this grant is a, there's no city funds associated with this grant. The city is acting as a conduit or pass-through for these grants. Every business owner is allowed, is given the opportunity to apply for these grants, and the business owner in this case is also providing the match for the grant. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file the council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It is tabled to allow for additional input and any, any changes. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have a quick question for our solicitor before we adjourn. Solicitor Gallagher, I believe that 5B and 5C fails because of a 2-2 tie.
It's just going to be reintroduced.
I'm just, like, what the?
I believe you're correct.
Okay.
Then it's going to be reintroduced at a further meeting. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.